Hello everyone, welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting. It's Monday, October 9th, 2017. For those of you that know, we've celebrated Indigenous People Day and Columbus Day, all in one, so I think we are ready to go for business tonight. We're convening at the Firehouse. We have an interesting agenda tonight. We normally start out with identifying ourselves, and I'm Tom Jacobs, who is, I'm serving as Chair this term, and I'll start down here with Jean.
I'm Jean Connor.
Carson Thurber.
Jim Carroll.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening Chad Gordon.
And Nancy Lively is going to be our reporter or secretary tonight. Thanks Nancy. And Stuart Hurd?
Stuart Hurd, Town Manager.
Okay, if we could all stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance together?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, into your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
Thank you. We've circulated the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the previous board meeting, September 25th, held in the same venue, and also the warrants, which I've signed based upon my review, and I'm assuming that everyone else is also, if you have a something?
Yes, did you folks all should have received the October 2nd minutes from the Levas meeting?
Oh, yes, Monday.
Yeah, unfortunately they went out after the packet, I don't know whether you want to consider them tonight as well.
I think we could, but they were circulated, and I, we've all had the opportunity, I believe, to review those. So, if there is a motion for the consent agenda, that will include the minutes of September 25th and October 2nd, along with the warrants. Can I have a motion for that purpose?
So moved, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda that circulated all, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any abstentions or votes against? Abstention? For both, or just?
Just the October 2nd.
Okay. You can note that, at this point, Mr. Thurber is not going to be talking about the 2nd, because he was not in attendance.
I wasn't in attendance either, I guess.
That's right, come to think of it.
Sorry.
Those two abstentions will be duly noted in the record. Thanks, Stu. We have a citizen comment period, and I see that Jeff Grimshaw has signed up to share some excellent results with us. Jeff, you have the floor.
Hello, thank you very much for allowing me to just talk. I want to introduce this gentleman here, this is Chris Siperly. Chris is the Assistant General Manager and Defensive Coordinator for, now I'm going to do my announcer voice, for your NEFL champion Vermont, Southern Vermont Storm Football Team. They won it this past weekend on a hail mary pass with four seconds left, 50-yard pass, bedlam broke loose at the middle school field where it was played before about 600 people. So, I just wanted to introduce, Bennington has a winning team.
How are you doing guys?
Great.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
What would be real exciting is if you had a PowerPoint, you could throw that hail mary up on the board.
Yeah, I almost came prepared with that, but I thought that might be a little over the top. The Storm has put together a commemorative photo, and I'll give it to the Secretary, and you guys can wrestle for it, whoever wants it.
We will gladly accept it, with the pride that it's delivered.
Thank you.
And we will place it in the Town Office, if that's okay. Stuart, you'll find appropriate place.
We can do that, yes.
And this is, this is Bennington's team, we call it Bennington's winning team. One caveat, though, there were problems this year in scheduling facility for the Storm. I don't want to say, I think this team has proven that they're champions, and I think they deserve to play in what we call, in the big house, in Bennington, and that is Spinelli Field. And we understand that there are protocols, and it can be problematic to have multiple non-high school teams playing at Spinelli Field. But, policies can sometimes, when you're into momentum marketing and opportunity marketing, my feeling is that it should be, we should break policy to do that. And the Storm has proven that they are more than a match for anyone else, and deserve to play in the big house, where there's adequate stands, PA system, scoreboards, and everything else that goes along with big time football. And I should mention that the NEFL is the biggest semi-pro league in America today. So these guys are kind of the best of the best of their conference. And the only caveat is, is because they've been shut out many times, and had to go to Tamarack over in New York State, or in the middle school field, where they can only kick field goals on one side of the field, I'm not sure if that facility is up to the par of the play. So I would ask that, if we, maybe someone like Chad, who has, Chad, I don't want to single you out, but your campaign notion and platform still rings in my ears, let's leverage our inherent athletic facilities to stage events that bring more people into town. I should mention, this championship game was seen by over 10,000 cumulative viewers on Southern Vermont today, especially is driven by that 50-yard hail mary pass. So, and again, the only, not to put pressure on, but there is a township to our north that begins with an M and ends with R, that wants to talk about having these guys. And I would hate to see Bennington lose its championship team, and that's all I have to say.
Thanks very much, Jeff. Chris, how long has the Storm been in existence now?
2005. This is our first championship. We've been close before, but never got it done, and it was a tingling feeling on Saturday when it finally happened, so.
How many, how many teams in the conference?
Thirteen.
Wow.
Overall, there's over 40 in the league, but in our conference, there's 13.
These are teams that come from New Haven, Dover, New Hampshire, and so they need to eat, they need places to stay, and that's where Bennington gets this kind of incremental revenue.
And you said that, Jeff, that you had 900 people, or 600 people?
About 600.
600 people?
I think when they played at Spinelli, I think they did about 5, 600 there.
Now, from the remarks that you made, it seemed to me that you were hinting at some difficulty in getting permission to use Spinelli Field?
Amount of usage is the area of concern.
What, say that again?
The amount of usage of the field in a given, I want to say semester, but season is the concern.
The, this is probably not the right forum to have that discussion.
Sure.
But I certainly would not discourage it from happening. Maybe there are ways to accommodate or otherwise, but when we have basically one high school football field, takes a lot of use and abuse, and it's a really question I expect, that really would be the Mount Anthony Board and Athletic Department would have to deal with it. I certainly don't want to put Chad on the spot, and he shouldn't be, because that's not his role.
Just an area of discussion.
More to the point, and I do have a question here, Tom, or Mr. Chairman. Have you been to the School Board to see?
Myself personally, no, but other members of the ownership, the owner and the General Manager have done that before.
Yeah.
Have gained some momentum.
Right.
Years past, we've only had one game.
Well, here's a concern that I think that the School Board may have, and that is, are you guys properly covered with respect to liability?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's right through the league. That's on, we pay league dues, and league dues is down, the insurance is handled through the league in conjunction with what we have.
Chad, can you speak to any of this?
Well, I can, a couple, I know last, I think it was April, I was at a MAU board meeting when the coach and others were there, and I was there. I spoke up at that time, and again, during the election, I kept saying, you know, this is the reason we need a turf field here in Bennington. It's not just the football field, I do correct people, because soccer plays there. I know right now, we had our last game Friday night, and Spinelli Field's in rough shape. And I know there's still two more JV games, the weather today, they had to cancel a girls' soccer game from CBU, one of the elite teams, because of the anticipated weather, they didn't make it down. So, turf fields, you don't have to worry about the drainage, the water on the turf field, we need a turf field. Unfortunately, even our lacrosse teams don't get to play up there in the spring, and that's unfortunate, that those players don't have a field.
I agree.
So, it is something that is definitely needed. I know when people are looking to, when teachers, new teachers come in, and they're looking at the communities to live in, and they see the facilities in Rutland, South Burlington, Manchester, they all have turf fields. And I think it's something that would be a big draw for our community, when people are looking to buy houses, it's something that needs to happen.
Are there any alternatives that you could offer to them for their game?
I would, just to be fair, the school has tried to accommodate us by giving us a middle school, so it's not that, you know, it's just hands in the air, too bad. We are working towards a resolution, but ultimately, as far as the growth of the team and hopefully the jumpstart with the economy, kind of makes sense.
Well, I think that, you know, to go back to Jeff's point, if, you know, the folks up north, vis a vis Manchester, would like to invite you, I'd rather that not happen.
I agree. This is where we belong.
I'd rather have you folks be down here, and do what we can to accommodate you.
Because when we started, that's what we had to do. We're in Manchester, and we drew very well up there, but as time went on, everybody wanted here, and we just couldn't get it done. And now we're starting to do that again, and I would say that numbers as far as attendance is as high as it's ever been, and I hate to see it go backwards.
Me too.
Thank you very much.
Tom, can I ask a question?
Please.
I noticed you had a SVC.
It's actually SVS, Southern Vermont Storm.
Oh, it's the same color. Is there a field at Southern Vermont College? Have you checked?
There, yeah.
Uh, there's, well, I don't believe there's a dedicated football field, because I do know that, according to them, they don't have lights, I haven't been, so I take their word for it. They would, somebody would ultimately have to decide to either convert a baseball softball field into a football field with either temporary field goal posts, that's, I mean, it's not impossible, but I'm not sure that's something they would want to entertain, I don't.
So they don't have a football team?
No.
Why does it have to be on turf, rather than grass?
It doesn't, no, it doesn't have to be on grass. No, I love, personally, me playing, I love grass.
Probably wear and tear.
I was saying turf because of wear and tear.
That's right.
I mean, currently, Spinelli Field is in rough shape. If you walk there today.
It gets ripped up because of all the use.
It's pretty torn up just from the high school usage.
And that's turf, or?
No, that's just grass.
That's grass.
And that's what I played on.
Yeah, but you didn't have a game every day, like they're having there, sometimes two. So it's just a limited facility.
I worry, I do worry about injuries to student athletes on a rough playing surface.
Well, I'd like to see whatever we can do, and I invite you to contact me if I can be of some help.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I think that this would be great for the town, you know, just bringing in hundreds of people to fill hotels, restaurants, and other places in town, and don't go to Manchester. It's a bad place.
Well, you know, I mean, ultimately, we're looking at a community investment here. I mean, I would like to work with Chad, because it's basic, I mean, eventually, we're going to need players, and it's good, we have kids that come to games and practices all the time, they all have tasks, we're all welcomed in. You know how things go when kids don't have a resource, and we just want to be a positive influence, and being able to offer some form of entertainment that, outside of Burlington, I think that's your closest thing out there, like us, so.
No, no, I won't be too much longer, but how far away do the teams that you play come from?
On average, I would say two and a half, three hours, some of them are four.
There's Rhode Island team?
Yes.
Rhode Haven?
There's Maine teams. Where we were this year in our division, they kind of grouped together by region, but as we move up, the travel time gets bigger, and as a result of our championship, we are, by league rule, we have to move up, so teams will be traveling further. And there's also additional dates. When you're in Single A, you have eight dates, when you're Double A, you have 10, and then when you get into Triple A, you have 12. And as you go higher, and division roster size also grow, so that gives us even more opportunity to give people an outlet, so.
And are, your players, are they principally from the local area?
I would say 85 to 90 percent. Well, actually, no, I take that back. They're all local, but I'd say 85 to 90 percent are Bennington grads, of some form.
Good, I think, you know, this is well done, and with Chad's leadership, it will continue to be a feeder program for the Storm.
We got a lot of them.
We've got some movement, some real success this year.
May I give a shout out to Mount Anthony, the School Board, and the Music Department of Mount Anthony, which reconstituted the marching band, which was very upsetting not to have them there for the first three home games, but they got them there for homecoming, and it was everything that a football game should have, and I'm very proud, and that spilled out to like 2,500 viewers on Southern Vermont today. So it was, you know, a problem, and a problem, hopefully the problem was solved, and it's great to have music back, driving the glorious victory that Chad engineered this weekend, last past weekend at homecoming, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Rescue Squad presentation. I just want to caution everyone that's either watching or on the board, that we're not doing a budget review. We're going to be doing that in October, we're in our, excuse me, not in October, January, but that's when the budgets are really formulated, during the course of October and November. So the purpose of tonight is to hear from the squad as to what services it has provided the community, and what it hopes to do in the future, and how the town of Bennington might figure into that, from the management and Select Board side.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you Chairman. Select Board, thank you guys for having us again tonight. Like I said, when we came back in January, we'll try to touch base with you folks a couple times a year, based on the support that the town gave us and the citizens gave us, making sure that we're keeping everyone aware of what's going on, always open for comment. I appreciate those that actually submitted some questions through Stu, and in this quick presentation, I've got a couple of questions, both from you guys and from Shaftesbury, that I'll talk about, and I can answer any other questions that you may have. So, without further ado, keep in mind, we are Bennington Rescue, is only one of seven critical care licensed EMS agencies in Vermont, and we're the only one in southwest Vermont, so we have a level of care that is actually higher than paramedic level. And as you guys saw in May, and I believe I came and shared with you folks, we are the first mission lifeline gold recipient in Vermont, so for our cardiac care, which is phenomenal for the men and women of Bennington Rescue, to provide that care on a day-to-day basis. So, how did 2016 end up? Well, we ended up with a little over 5,700 calls, or requests for service, that is down a little bit from 2015, and we think that is somewhat attributed to our initiatives to try to keep people, try to work with the hospital, and work with places like One Care Vermont, and the Blueprint for Health, and that type of thing, and trying to identify people that have needs in the community, and to keep them from calling EMS, and from going to the ED, and getting them the care that they need. That ultimately, you know, based on our payer model, shoots us, shoots ourselves in the foot, but it's the right thing for the patient. There's not necessarily a compensation model for that yet, but we think that is attributed to some of the decrease in actual heart rate. And as you can see, the mutual aid of providing around surrounding towns and areas is only about 200 of that actual amount. So how's all that shape up? About 64% of the time, we're looking at some sort of a medical issue. I kind of made it in these big buckets, and we can dig down in detail as much as you want. 26% of the time, that's trauma. 8% of the time, we still don't know, sometimes people don't know what's going on with them. Bypassers will call in, you just don't necessarily know what's happening until we actually get there. So that's a quick synopsis of that. I'll keep going, if you guys have questions, hop in, or I'll ask for questions at the end.
Forrest, you've mentioned there's been a lessening of the demand for service, potentially anyway, and you referenced One Care Vermont and a couple of others. Could you just give the overview, not we're going into an ACA, but what is the purpose of that?
The goal of it is, is to provide the right care for the right patient at the right time. So, a lot of that is probably one of the most successful things we have going on, that was our falls reduction program, so it's grant funded right now, where people are referred to our team, we have a team of folks that are trained, that we try to identify the patient's fall risk prior to them having a fall, so we're trying to prevent said fall, which has been really great, our numbers are fantastic. Bennington County has one of the highest fall rates in Vermont and in the country, which is, you know, it's not great to be first in some things. But there is a concerted effort to reduce the actual falls, and that program has allowed us to go in, we work with the patient, we sort of make it their idea, so instead of us, if I came into your house and said, "Tom, you need to move your, this rug is a fall hazard, we should put that away." If I help you move that, when I leave, you're going to put the rug back where you want it. But if we come in and use therapeutic communication and have a conversation with you and say, "Tom, how can we reduce, what do you think around your house might contribute to your falls?" And, you know, you say, "Well, this rug, I always trip over a lot." Huh, what should we do with that? And it becomes your idea, and it's more likely to do something with it and follow through with it. So that's one of the initiatives, there's a couple others as well, but that's probably the best, that's top of mind.
You get that contact because of the recidivism, the repeat calls, potentially of sane people?
Sometimes, high-volume utilizers, sometimes, primary care physicians. We're working really well with a lot of the primary care physicians, the nursing folks, BIADA, VNA, all the folks around town, we've approached them, we've talked to them about programs like this, trying to be a bigger player in sort of the whole healthcare picture, try to solve the problem at its root, instead of just be a Band-Aid. No pun intended, being an EMS guy.
I like that approach. You know that I, you know, I raked you guys over the coals about a year ago, and I'm glad that you've taken this more, not just responsible, but innovative way to address, you know, frequent flyers, for lack of a better phrase.
High utilizers.
Pardon me?
High utilizers.
Yes, yeah, I think that's great. Glad to hear it.
So, it's a great thing, the hope is, is that the state evolves a program like that in some sort of sustainable model. Right now, it's not sustainable. Right now, it's a pilot program or a test program. So, hopefully that'll, right now, it's benefiting everybody downstream, and not necessarily us. Any other questions on that? As far as our, the volume in 2016, held about the same, 29% of the people, or 29% of the time that we're called for an emergency call, we're not actually, the patient doesn't actually require transport. And if you recall, the last time I was here, you know, EMS, the system itself is messed up, where we don't actually get any type of reimbursement unless we put you in an ambulance and take you somewhere. That's not Forrest's rule, that's not Town Bennington's rule, that's just the EMS system in general.
When you say EMS system, is that Medicare, Medicaid?
All the payers, so Medicare, Medicaid, any of your commercial payers. There's not, there's not insurance codes for not taking someone somewhere.
For preventing it from coming, that is not yet.
Doesn't exist yet. There are some pilot programs in Minnesota, and Maine, and Texas, there's nothing in Vermont.
Okay.
So, what have we done over the last couple of years? So, when I came to you guys last fall, has it only been a year? The, we had set out sort of a 2020 plan, and we have continued down that path. We reduced our staffing to the absolute minimum level, so now there's very, there's no fluff, as far as the amount of ambulances on duty. The hospital uses a rotation system to give out sort of their transfer business, and we don't staff on days that they give business elsewhere. I think that's an opportunity, we'll talk about that in a minute. The, we've done all the normal things any proper business owner would do, decreased workers' comp benefits, you know, doing all the insurance shopping, we've had to decrease some of our staff benefits, renegotiated contracts with vendors, all that type of thing. So all the normal expense reduction things you would expect from anyone running a proper business.
What does insurance shopping mean? What do you mean by that?
So, putting your stuff out to market, so putting your, putting your policy out to market, so.
Right.
Shopping around to three or four different vendors, like if you go to Price Chopper and you see a head of lettuce, and it's 79 cents, and you go to Hannaford, and all even somewhere else and try to find the best price.
So that's what you're doing?
We did that with, like, our policy, like our premium, like our commercial liability, our workers' comp, our umbrella, our marine, inland marine, all the things that we have to have to protect us.
So, has there been a reduction in staff? You mentioned there, reduced staff?
We have reduced staff, we have reduced some coverage hours, but we haven't affected level of care in, there hasn't been a decrease below what Bennington requires based on the data, if that makes sense, Tom.
Okay, so you reduced some staff hours and?
Yes, some unit hours, yes, there has been hours that the ambulances have been taken off the road. Not, not all of the ambulances, certain additional ambulances, absolutely.
Is there a dollar amount you can attribute to those reductions?
Yes, probably not off the top of my head, but absolutely.
Okay.
I expect we'll probably talk about during the budget process.
Yeah, oh absolutely.
Last year versus this year.
Sure, absolutely.
Is that, is that?
That's fine.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just thought you might know.
Not off the top of my head, no. It's roughly, if you want to look at a, the rough model, is it costs about a million dollars a year to put one ambulance on 24/7 for an entire year.
I've got another question, if you can go back to the last one.
Yes, sir.
The bottom one, it says renegotiated contracts with vendors, define vendors.
So the people that we buy stuff from, so we buy medical supplies, oxygen, we bought cardiac monitors that we have renegotiated our pricing, or the price structure to sort of level out our costs, and I have large bumps in price to level those out and to make smarter choices.
It's very responsible.
And so, can I ask Forrest?
Yes, ma'am.
So, are there, I mean, I guess, and this has sort of been asked before, but, so are you going to show us sort of what that means in terms of numbers?
Sure, absolutely, we can, we come around budget time, or if you want it beforehand, yeah, we can.
Oh, but not in this presentation?
No, 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 I'm just trying to give you some highlights today, but.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, whatever. I know this wasn't a budget session, but I wanted, I know that was a lot of the reason that we're having this engagement, so I wanted to make sure we hit on some points. So on our side, as far as the actual billing side, so our difficult and delinquent accounts we're staying on top of, we have an appeals process, we have certain processes now with estates and deceased patients, trying to go after anything that, any meat, or anything that's still on the table that we potentially have access to, we're reaching out for. Some of those didn't exist last year, some of them didn't exist in their most efficient methods. We are now, our billing staff does a phenomenal job, while we, if you actually put billing services out to bid, the collection rate that billing vendors offer us, we're meeting that. So to me, that's an opportunity, so we actually started billing for other EMS agencies around as a revenue stream for us. So we're taking a little bit of that extra capacity and using that as a.
So you're farming this out, what's your?
No, it's the other way around, it's the other way.
Okay, I'm sorry, well.
Yeah, I'm the, we're farming out billing services to other EMS agencies.
They will, they will take, they will service billing for other services.
Yeah, so.
Good for you.
Yeah, so Jim Carroll EMS, and you need an EMS biller, we could provide that service with, for you. And as you guys, I can't remember exactly where I was at, but the fundraising continues to go on, this should hit your mailbox this week, our annual fundraising letter, so be on watch out for that, and everybody at home. The, and then, you guys have probably seen a ton of us, a ton of promotional and social media, and throughout the town, we're offering a ton of CPR classes, EMS education classes, one to increase the education in the community, and also it is a revenue stream for us. Now, we're not making money hand over fist, but we do make sure it's, you know, budget neutral, we're in the black as we're doing that type of thing.
And Rescue Fest?
Yes.
You know, I'm sorry, I've got to say this, but that word fest calls to mind May Fest, and you know, what a festive thing it is.
We're the festival town, Garlic Fest, May Fest, Fall Fest.
And you're going to have participants that can fake a heart attack, and you can show us how it gets done.
Public community engagement event fundraiser for us in the spring, it was very successful the last couple of years, and it's great to get out and be able to allow the kids to climb over the ambulances, that type of thing, and have some community engagement.
Good for you.
Hey Forrest, I'm just going to jump in a second, and I think it is important, many of you know I work at the hospital, and we encourage tours, and the idea is, when people utilize services such as, you know, I'll use the word ours in that, in this kind of terminology, it's nice when they can do it on their terms, you know, if they get a little bit of kind of comfort with who you are and the services that you offer, it's better for them to learn that in advance than maybe when that's needed most, and it's all of a sudden. So, I think you do a great job with kind of encouraging people to come to Rescue Fest, and all those pieces of it, so keep it up.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, real quickly, I'm trying to stay along here, Mr. Chairman.
Just before you go, maybe you've got something further down in your slide deck. Mass casualty EMS response, and, you know, we're seeing more and more of that on the evening news and these disasters that keep occurring. What's, what do you do to provide that level of comfort to our citizens?
So, all of our providers are trained annually on some sort of mass casualty triaging, all those types of things in that genre. There's a lot of, as you can imagine, as you get into the details of it, there's a lot of things underneath. As, we're constantly doing a lot of planning, so we work a lot with the local EMS district, the local LEPC. Of course, we work closely with Chief Doucette and State Police. We also have assets. Bennington has, you know, we have a mass casualty trailer, which, as you said, Carson, it's one of those things you guys should stop by and see. You know, we're not a huge organization, you know, where we are in rural Vermont, you know, but our trailer can handle between 30 and 50 patients depending on the severity of them. And, you know, it's, it's, the stock is constantly rotated and, you know, it's kept ready to roll. It's the trailer you guys see a lot at Garlic Fest or Mayfest, that type of thing. And, you know, our staff are trained on how to use that and how to deploy it, and God forbid, let's hope it stays in the garage, but...
Right, good spot. Great. Thanks.
Yeah, well, that's...
Good, okay, thanks. I didn't mean to divert you. Go ahead.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, a couple of questions, either you guys submitted or the towns Shastberry submitted. So, some of the surrounding towns, and I believe, Mr. Carroll, you brought this up last time, that especially in Eastern New York and surrounding Bennington, other towns were leaning on our paramedic service, and it wasn't necessarily a service that was paid for. So, we reached out to both, to all of those EMS agencies and their respective select boards, a letter ran out, I believe it's August 1st, and we said, you know, with full support of my board, that said, you know, Bennington, Shastberry, and Woodford are no longer subsidizing care in Eastern New York or any place else in Vermont or Massachusetts. So, if you call us, that's totally fine, and if we have the resources available, you know, we would absolutely love to come and provide those services for you. However, if you do utilize us, that there's going to be a bill somewhere, and...
Good for you. I'm...
And the EMS agency doesn't pay, then the towns have been put on theirs as well. That, you know, it's a resource that, you know, I don't want to come to you guys and say, "Hey, all the money you guys are giving us is going to, you know, Rensselaer County."
And thus far, what kind of cooperation have you got?
There's, we have some contracts in place now, finally, that we've been trying for years to get now, when I've got the levers of the towns behind us as well.
I am duly impressed.
Thank you. We're trying, we're trying. So, that's happening, so, and we'll see how that goes. Once again, we can't solve every problem, and sometimes EMS services expend our resources well, sometimes we have to call for help. You know, I don't have a bays full of hundreds of ambulances, I have six. So, if, you know, seven people call 911 all at one time, we are out of resources, and we have to, you know, we have to depend on our neighbors. So, that's a service that I'm glad that we're providing, but once again, nothing's free anymore. So, a question that came, I believe, to Shastberry, is, does a paramedic take BLS or basic life support calls? And the answer is yes, and the reason is, is that while we do have multiple ambulances on, depending on the time of day and day of week, the, and we try to send the most appropriate ambulance to the appropriate call. So, if you're, if you have foot pain, you know, we would send basically a BLS crew. However, I refer to my last, my last comment, we don't have a deep bench. So, sometimes, just based on, you know, the only call that's left is the ankle pain, the only person left is a paramedic, yes, you might have a paramedic show up on your, on your scene. And vice versa, to stop another question, is the, I've got some comments of like, why sometimes you guys see two ambulances on a scene? Well, it's because sometimes that paramedic was tied up on another call. Another crew went and provided, you know, stabilizing care, realized that the patient needed a paramedic, and when that, when that paramedic cleared up, they go to that scene, and then they switch out and make two other, you know, reassign the crews. So, it's, that's some of the reason behind some of that. So, one of the questions that came up was, how do we compare to other services? So, you guys might be able to see this better on your sheets, but as far as the number of ambulances, what our staff is, our full-time staff, and how we sort of lay that out over day shift versus night shift?
Before we leave that, those, number of ambulances, Rutland Regional, that's through the hospital?
No, they are, they're just like us.
Okay. Are all of these the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to turn my mic on. Can you go back just quickly?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are they the only kind of shop in town in Rutland? Do they have, is there a private ambulance service up there too?
Well, I mean, they don't have, they're a big player in a big island, and there's not really other EMS agencies around.
Because the number is just, when you look down through number of calls, 9100 and then 5800 versus seven ambulances, they're either in two places at the same time a lot, you know what I mean? Like, it's just something where...
They also have, because they're not in a competitive environment.
Yeah.
They don't have, they can roll those ambulances constantly.
I just think it's good for you to talk about it, because, I mean, you guys are doing a lot with, you know, six. I mean, it's incredible, the volume, how you make it all work. I don't envy you, but they have the same, they have a big hurdle too. Not that the one next to us, Brattleboro's in a similar boat. It's just good to look at the numbers, I suppose.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, move on.
Before we leave that.
Yes, sir.
Just the town funding, how, where did you verify or get that information?
That is from the data that I gave you guys last year, that was given to me by the state. I asked for updated, a couple of them might be adjusted slightly based on information I was able to get through the media or through town stuff, but it hasn't, it's been all through official means.
Can I just ask a couple really, kind of, probably really simple questions? Anytime there's a fire call, does an ambulance automatically go or not? Okay.
No, they request us. So, certain things, we work well with both, all four fire departments that we cover. So, working structure fires, obviously we co respond on car wrecks, motor vehicle accidents. If there are any type of extended deployment, you know, we help to work with them to rehab. And, you know, you want, it's a life safety thing, so at a certain point, certain events, they will call us. I would have to check the dispatch cars to figure out what exactly we're automatically responding on, but we don't go on every smoke alarm or...
Yeah. And then, and then if an ambulance, say, has taken someone to Albany Med and they're on their way back.
Yes.
And they're in the state, and a call comes through, can they go immediately from...
Yes.
They don't have to go back, regroup clean?
As soon as they're, as soon as we are non-patient loaded, we're ready to respond.
Okay.
Absolutely. We respond all the time from the hospital. As soon as we're available, again, usually, we're right back out the door. Anything else on that? We can come back to it. So, one of the other questions came up was, how do we establish the EMS charge structure? So, as you can imagine, just like with any healthcare billing thing, it gets complicated really quickly. The type of care, whether it was an emergency or non-emergency, because we do do the non-emergency stuff, which helps us, helps cover a big portion of the cost. The level of care provided, whether you have a paramedic, an AEMT, or an EMT. And, once again, one of the weird EMS billing things is loaded miles. So, imagine your taxi cab, I hate to use us in the same vein as a taxi cab, but we get a trip for you and your neighbor that lives half a mile down the road, the bill that you guys will get is going to be a few dollars off because that's how the charges are established.
Loaded mile?
Yes.
What does that mean?
That's how many miles you're actually in the ambulance.
You mean as a patient?
So, if we load you in the ambulance and then take you to the hospital, that's a loaded mile, or loaded miles. So, that's how the billing industry, or that's how the insurance industry.
And what's the rate?
It depends on, I don't know, I don't know our charge rate off here, but I can tell you that the rate structure, once again, in healthcare is very weird, where there's one rate for miles 1 through 16, there's another one for 16 through 30, and then there's 30 plus. And I'm sorry, Jim, I don't have those off the top of my head.
You know, it's complicated. We could spend hours and hours talking about it.
Days and weeks.
Because you can, you can charge anything you want, but you're only at a certain...
Exactly. Excellent segue.
Dude, I didn't see that on this one.
Well, we are talking about no charge, but, Tom, you mentioned allowable expenses. So, some of the federal payers, keep in mind that no matter how much we charge them, as Tom just said, we could charge them $10 million, at the end of the day, federal payers say, "We're only going to pay you this amount." And by taking this amount, you cannot, you can't go after the patient for any difference, and that's part of sort of playing in the federal system. And then, medical necessity, would this, this will blow your mind. EMS and 911 calls used to be sort of the sacred ground, where now, certain patients are being, or certain claims are getting kicked out because they're saying, "Why did this person call an ambulance?" And I'm like, because they, they felt like they needed an ambulance, or, I'm not saying that our billing staff is.
They have a phone.
And they, they're like, "Well, they didn't need to, they could have went in a car." And I was like, "We don't have that choice." Like, the patient wants to go to the hospital and they call us, you know, so, we had very frank discussion with billing companies, we're like, "So, are you saying it's okay for us to say, 'No, we're leaving on the side of the road'? And they're like, "Oh, no, 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 you can't say that." I was like, "Exactly." So, it's a very, very weird situation. So, I want to walk you through a real quick scenario based on what I was just telling you, that this is a charge amount, I think it's a basic life support call for us, and what they, and the, if you go down two rows, the Medicare allowable, this is what Medicare allows. That's what they say, "No matter what you charge, this is what we allow." Medicare also says that whatever you charge, like, you can't have a variable fee structure. You have to charge everybody the same. You can't, you can't sort of pick and choose. So, Medicare pays about 80% of that, that's the green line. That's what we typically get on this type of call. And then, that $75 is what ends up going to the patient. All that stuff up top, so sometimes we, about 50% of the time, we get the yellow. The red, no matter what that red ends up being, automatically goes off to the side. We, that's not, we can't go after the patient, we can't talk to anybody about it, it's all a wash. You guys have probably listened to Don George from Blue Cross Blue Shield, or some of the other CEOs talk about cost shifting, and the reason our rates are what they are is because commercial payers pay 100%. So, you know, every year, we adjusted a couple percentage points, we stay with the market rates based on, you know, using Vermont and regionalized market structure, and they help subsidize sort of the federal payment system. Why is it a big deal? Because if you look at, you know, 60-some percent of our, close to 70% of our business is federal payer, so this is my everyday life, or our everyday life.
And also, just the fact that we live where we live, we're the oldest poorest part of the country, so your Medicare, Medicaid population that you serve is a big part of that. Now, if you could shift all that to commercial, you would be in the driver's seat.
Be a little bit better. It would be, yeah, for sure. All right. So, how can, how can the folks support Bennington Rescue? Well, the hospital uses an ambulance rotation system that they divvy out calls to other EMS agencies, sometimes our competitors. And transfers fill the time, and when we have, based on data, we try to make sure we have enough ambulances on to cover the need, and, like I said, it changes on the time of day and day of week. But, as, based on the insurance system, as you guys learned tonight, if we have patients loaded and moving them, that helps offset the cost because you have an ambulance that's in use. So, if you have a friend, a family member, demand Bennington Rescue, tell them that you want, you know, EMS, you want your local EMS service.
Oh, good question there. Stop right there. So, when the hospital calls out for a transfer.
Yep.
It's at the hospital's discretion?
They rotate.
Correct.
But there is no, if someone were to request you...
Oh, well, then, you have that right.
That would, that would be great.
But if I, if you were in the hospital, Jim, and I came up and I said, "I'm going to call you an ambulance," would you, who would you assume they're calling?
Bennington Rescue.
If a couple people showed up and took you someplace, would you think to question it, or?
I would just, I would assume that it would be Bennington Rescue Squad.
I think they'd probably have some issues, both financially and otherwise, and qualifying Medicare and Medicaid, all of those things. Now, you're...
But it would seem to me that the hospital...
It rotates.
Would make his first choice.
No, they can't.
The local rescue, why not?
They can't tell you what provider to use.
They can't tell you, it's a patient choice. It needs to be a patient choice issue. So what I'm saying is, you have the right to choose your cardiologist, your orthopedist, your primary care physician. So what I'm saying is, is that you have a choice in your healthcare, make sure you request that choice. Make sure you utilize that option. I'm not saying, I would never force the hospital's hand to use us or anyone else because, just like, I don't want to use a certain car vendor versus another. But what I'm saying is, is that people do have that choice, and when you have that choice, say Bennington Rescue, that's what we want you to say.
How many, how many providers are doing what you're doing in that company?
I'm sorry, Tom.
How many providers are you competing in this rotation with?
Right now, four. So, it's...
Because it's a lucrative variant, I expect.
Yeah, because the, because the transfer business, if you go back to the other slide, that pays. So, that helps offset the emergency business, where, you know, 30% of the time, we don't get funding.
And that's in proximity to the medical center.
Yeah. Are they also doing EMS besides transport work, those other four?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
How many days a week aren't you getting?
There's two assigned days to other places, and then there's, it also is very intermittent other times.
So, as a percentage, it's a lot?
Yeah.
Just, I think it's worth really putting some emphasis on what we're talking about here. Two days a week, you're not getting transfers out of our health system. Is that correct?
Of your...
Two days a week, you're not getting transfers out of our health system?
Correct.
So, that's two days a week that a large portion of your daily income is kind of held back.
And a competing provider is coming in and taking a, potentially a Bennington resident from a local healthcare facility to another local healthcare facility, so, you know, it's, it gets murky. But regardless of all the issues, I believe you bring up some great points, and you have a choice, make sure you use that choice. That's sort of my...
A lot of folks don't even know they have the choice, though.
Exactly. Yeah, your physician tells you something, and you move right down the channel.
I've got to be honest with you, the point that you bring up, I find this very troubling, especially when the people of Bennington are, will have voted to foot the bill to the tune of $200,000, and you guys are getting first dibs. And now, you know, I'll agree that, you know, we all ought to, it's nice and ideal that we all get a slice of the pie, but not when it's on the Town of Bennington's tab. It shouldn't be farmed out to Wilmington or any other place. First dibs should be the Town of Bennington. And if there's anything that we can do to effectuate that result, I'm squarely behind.
I appreciate that. And I think that the thing is, is that I don't want to, I don't want to make it a rival on a geographic thing. I want to make it...
Well, I will then.
Well, that's your area, but what I want to tell you is that, because I firmly believe it's about patient choice. It's one of those things where we have to, because if I'm a patient up there and I'm not a Bennington resident, let's pretend I'm from, I'm going to pick some faraway place that doesn't exist, you know, Topeka, and I want Topeka EMS to come pick me up, that's my choice, and I'm wanting to take that choice.
All right. Well, let's just look at a scenario, and I won't be, I don't want to draw the ire of our chairman, but if we...
You're close, I told you.
Okay. All right. If someone, if an ambulance has to come from Wilmington, when you guys are available in Bennington because of some dibs idea, that's ridiculous. That's absolutely ridiculous. And who, well, who makes this decision about, who gets a chance to pick up a patient?
There's, great question, probably, I think there's longstanding traditions.
Is this determined at the hospital level?
I don't, I don't know all the parameters involved in where and how those decisions were made. I've been working very hard on trying to...
How is it determined that, you know, you're called, or Wilmington is called rather than you are?
Right now, it's day of the week.
Huh?
Right now, it's day of the week.
Day of the week. Well, somebody's got to make a decision, who is it?
That's...
And when the, and I'll say it again, and it bears repeating, if the people of the Town of Benning, Bennington are footing the bill to the tune of $200,000, we come first. Period.
Okay. Appreciate your comments, thank you. All right. Last couple things, just a teaser for later, when you guys get to your budgeting talk, is we're sticking with our 2020 plan. We're not anticipating any increases. We're still at the 207, 459, which is the 1213 per capita. The, I got a couple emails this last week, some of my colleagues up north. Upper Valley is, they're $37 a person for 2017, and they're proposing a... proposing a, a $5 increase to their select board.
How much is that again, at Forest?
It's 37. And they're moving up, they're asking for $42 a person. And then Newport is going from, they're currently at 24, and they're looking to go on over 30 right now. So, you know, I think when we look comparatively, I think we run a very efficient service. And, you know, we're still below the state capita. And obviously, the one thing we'd like to do is move away from appropriations and get it in the actual budget and be able to have the conversation with you folks every year on what we're doing. And see if you guys have any questions. Continue to be transparent and open.
I think, not speaking for the rest of us, but I think we all feel the same way, that we'd rather have it as a, a part of the budget line item process. Because if it's appropriated by petition each year, that has an impact far beyond the actual dollar amount. So I'm trying to, is, is that right?
I'm sorry.
Frankly, if it's, if we have a budget item, it makes your job a lot easier, and it would make our job a lot easier.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And the town as well.
I think you guys have a, an additional level of control and accountability and transparency as well. Because we're open, we'll give you whatever you want.
And for Jean's question, this is not a budget discussion, but when we see that budget, we're going to want to look at historical, as well as prospective precedent, so that we can determine whether or not the, the budgetary line process is supportive, that the board can give that support for the community. Jean?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just speak to the addition of the position, was it, I'm not sure the title of the...
Medical Director.
Medical Director?
Yeah.
And how that's being funded?
Oh, that was in the budget. That's been in the budget for two years. I haven't been able to find a proper candidate to, and this person is a four-hour, is an eight-hour-a-month employee. So they're giving us a couple hours a week, doing charter reviews, working on some policies, procedures, that type of thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I've got to dwell on, you know, the farming out of you guys. Sorry.
Okay. I think, basically...
I want an answer to that.
Okay, you can get an answer.
Who makes that decision?
It's a rotation basis that is determined at the hospital based upon the providers that have asked to be on that rotation.
It's out of his control.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so again, not the patient choice.
Yeah. They would love seven days a week, but...
Needs to change.
And the last slide is just a, a quick comparison that, you know, the one thing that we're trying to be very cognizant of, and I met with Stu and Tim Scoggins from Shastberry, that we're, we're trying to be fair across all the towns that we serve. So we're asking for the same thing for all three towns. We're not, we're not wavering. We're, we're trying to be equitable, because I think every citizen in all the towns that we cover all deserve that. So...
When we have your budget available for the, the board?
It'll be late November, early December. So that fits right into your guys' time frame pretty decently.
Stu, do you have any questions that?
I don't.
Jean?
I'm done. Thank you.
Carson?
I like you.
I'm Senator.
Don?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I look forward to seeing the results of your increased, increased cost savings and frugality. I think that, that will be helpful as we think about the amount that we put in last year and the amount that we would be expected to put in this year.
Awesome.
I agree. Thank you.
Chad?
Thank you for...
Pownell, there, uh, oh, because we don't cover Pownell. Pownell has their own ambulance service. Two quick plugs?
Please.
So there's an EMT class, start, it's a full-time EMT class, starting first week of January. It's seven weeks. Information is available on our website. It, it corresponds with Bennington College's fieldwork term. So if anyone is interested, there are more than likely positions available once you complete and pass your national exam. I think it becomes a part of your community. Obviously, we're always looking for volunteers.
How long is the schooling that...
It takes, we do a seven-week full-time, eight-to-four Monday through Friday, along with clinical time at the hospital and your riding time.
To be an EMT.
To get, to get you over the initial, that gets you past testing. And then when you come on board with us, then you, you have about anywhere from a three-to-six-month field training time where you're supervised. Sort of like a physician resident, if you want to think about it.
What kind of starting wages do EMTs make?
In the $14 range.
$14 an hour?
Yes.
Crazy hours, though, right?
Twenty-four-seven. Holidays, weekends, 100-degree heater, negative 20 outside.
You have a second thing for us, but I have a question for you, too.
Yes, ma'am.
You want to do your second?
The other thing I was gonna tell you is, all of our meetings, all of our board directors' meetings are, are open to the public. Third Wednesday of every month, at 6:00 PM at the station. Please come. And, and once again, if you guys have any questions or anything that you guys need to know, please don't hesitate to reach out to Stu. We have a great working relationship. I will answer any questions or send you data if that's, you guys want certain questions answered, don't hesitate.
I've got one final thing to say. And that is, you know, I really gave you a hard time the last time that you were here. And you came here prepared and addressed the concerns that I had. And I've got to tell you, I'm impressed.
Thank you, sir.
And very pleased.
Thank you.
So Forrest, my last question for you, and I apologize if this is overly broad, but I am interested in what the three-to-five-year, you have to speculate a little bit, but what's the three-to-five-year outlook for emergency rescue services? And what, what are kind of the mega trends? What's happening? What's likely to happen with the smaller communities surrounding us? Is there consolidation going on? Has the consolidation finished? Is that, are we getting closer to a, a more equitable pay system through hospitals? Is there any kind of big change coming that you can, there must be talk about this in your industry. Some people must be doing more than just getting by year to year.
Yes.
And so what are those people looking at when they're looking at the, the sort of foreseeable, the near future, but...
So nationally, there's a, there's a huge trend towards the, they call it community paramedicine or mobile integrated healthcare. And it's the, the thing I talked about earlier about helping keep people out of the hospital and keep peeping, keep people from calling EMS. There's a big push for that. There's a big push in specialization to where, if you want to think about, let's use nursing as an example. So, you know, you become a nurse, and you be, sort of get that base credential, and then you can specialize into cardiology, or you can CRNA, or you become an emergency room doc, or a flight nurse, or whatever else. Paramedicine is sort of going that same way, where you'll see, five or 10 years from now, you'll see paramedics or EMS providers that specialize in behavioral health, or other needs that communities might identify. Regionalization is definitely something I think that's on the radar. I think a lot of people's, a lot of folks are seeing that there's some economies of scale that can be gained. You know, you don't have to recreate an entire training division, or a fleet maintenance program, or what else. You get someone that can handle that and, and sort of scale it up. You know, our colleagues down in Williamstown are, I think they made an announcement a few weeks ago where they're talking about merging with another EMS agency. So, and that's probably going to happen by the first of the year. So that's, I think a lot of folks are scared to lose some of their individuality of their towns. And I think that doesn't have to be a, it doesn't have to be this conversation that someone's going to come in and take you over. It's sort of like, let's, you know, we can leave the uniforms the same, and the history the same, and all that. But, you know, let's, let's take out this engine and put a different engine in, and solve your HR problems, and solve everything else, and, and make the system run a little bit better. I mean, that's how the hospital's doing it now with some of their services with Dartmouth. You know, they're, they're farming out some of those. And it's, I, I think you're going to see that trend continue. That answered your question, in sort of a...
That's interesting. Yeah, thank you for that. Think you'll ever see telemedicine on the crash carts?
There are, not to, not to scare you, but there are some ambulances now that actually even have CT scanners built into them.
Really?
That you can, for stroke patients, that type of thing. We would never be able to afford one around here.
Yeah.
But in a big city, that if you have a stroke call, they can actually send a, an ambulance with a CT scanner on it, and you can diagnose a stroke in the field. And with all the advances in technology, there's lots of fun things we can do.
Some of the question that, which is directed at you there, board-driven, some of the decisions that kind of we're talking about, you know, what lies ahead, I think it's kind of a nice segue to, we kind of jumped right into it. The gentleman sitting to your left, though, I mean, take a second to, I mean, you have an amazing board that operates, you know, you kind of sit under, and I know your board chair is here, so just maybe... He's not a quiet guy. I know he's not quiet.
Thanks, Carson.
So, Brian?
Most of you know me. I'm Brian Pete. I'm the chair of the board. And yes, we do have a great board, a really, really good board. And we have a great administrator right here, as you see in this presentation. I mean, this guy really does his homework. So we really appreciate your time and look forward to working with you in January.
Great. Anything else, Scott? Really, thanks very much. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stu, turn to you relative to tax sale property?
Yes, this, this is the last of the 2016 sale properties. You'll recall, at the last meeting, we approved the sale of four out of the five. We did not have a successful bidder on this particular property, so we rebid it with a shorter bid period, but nonetheless, a bid period that was publicized. We did receive two bids. Only one of the bids exceeds the minimum amount requested, and that bid came in at $21,500. And it's Daniel Cutler, who actually is an adjoining property owner, who was interested in the property. The minimum bid required was 15, 927 and change. I'm recommending that the board approve that sale. Obviously, that starts a 30-day clock ticking, wherein the public may petition to void the sale, should they be aggrieved by the outcome.
Heard the manager's recommendation. Could I have a motion to accept the $21,500 bid from Dan Cutler?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussions, question, items on this? This is for a property located at, let me make sure where is the property?
186 South Branch.
186. Yep, thank you. 186 South Branch. Having no further discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
That's seven in favor. Yep. The next item is a library board liaison person. For a number of years, Jim has served as the liaison from the select board. It doesn't mean that he's a member of the board. He's actually a liaison between the select board and the library. They've requested that, since Jim has spent so much time and energy, if someone else from the board would take on that role, and Jean's mentioned that she'd be willing to accept that role?
Happily.
Okay. So, why don't, is there consensus? I don't know if we have to do much more than that, unless you want to vote?
There's consensus.
It's a consensus.
Thank you.
And thanks for doing that.
Do you want me to reach out to them, or will they be reaching out to me?
Stuart's going to get in touch with the...
Okay.
It was nice of you not to do it in absentia.
Yeah.
One of the appointed...
Just don't even talk about it. Okay. Managers report.
I, I don't have any action items tonight, but I do want to remind folks that the bond, bond vote is tomorrow on the sewer bond. It is at this location and at the North Bennington Town Offices. You will probably have noticed, construction trailers, signage, pipe piles starting to, to build up around the community. We expect that construction will start in some of those areas as early as next week. We are still working on a, what they're calling a soil spoils site. One was selected. There is some resistance by the neighbors in the adjoining, adjoining properties. There may be some other areas that, that are available, and that work is ongoing. And that's really the state's responsibility to find those sites that are approved, so the contractors may use them. And this is, what we're not doing is, we're not taking soil out of the ground and moving it away and putting better soil back in. These are excess soil, excess soils. So when you're doing a waterline construction, you're going to backfill with what's available to you. But there is, because of the, the pipe and the bedding material, there's going to be excess soil that's available that has to go somewhere. And most likely, it is contaminated with PFOA. So we're trying to keep that in the neighborhoods where PFOA contamination already exists in the soils. We're not going to move it to other sites where those contaminations don't exist. And I, I say "we," but it's really the state of Vermont, St. Gobain, and working with the two engineering firms that are doing the main part of the project.
Stu, why, why wouldn't you or the town, or, I guess you have factored into this, that, you know, wouldn't we want to remove that, that contaminated soil, soil, and therefore make it St. Gobain's responsibility?
It, well, it, there's no, there is no effective way to clear PFOA from the soils.
Okay.
So, to, to, and St. Gobain would probably not agree to that. And the purpose of the state's decision to try to find places within the community where the contamination already exists is to move the project forward. We could still be negotiating. In fact, we took a real hard line and said, "You got to clean that soil and make it all better." It can't be done right now.
But have they agreed to it?
They've agreed to pay the bill for all of the waterline extensions.
Well, no. Have they agreed to take the contaminant out of the soil?
No. They can't. There's, there's no way to do that.
There's no way to do it at all?
Not at the present time. And, and I'm sure there's research ongoing, because PFOA is, is an emerging contaminant, and it's pretty much everywhere.
But has the door been closed on...
The consent order has been filed and signed by a judge. This project's going forward. The excess soils will be deposited on sites that the state selects that can be approved.
But St. Gobain, my question, my pointed question to you is, with respect to this contaminated soil, is the door closed with respect to the responsibility that St. Gobain may or may not have in cleansing the soil of PFOA?
That door is closed on phase one.
All of these properties that are within that area are going to be served by municipal water?
Municipal water.
Okay.
And, and in most cases, you know, the, the level of PFOA in the soil is rather low. But, you know, you can understand, if you were a property owner and, and you thought that material was going to be deposited in your neighborhood that didn't come from your neighborhood, that you might object to that. And that's the issue. They're, they're, they identified one site, I think one site is, is really inadequate, because it does mean transporting contaminated soil through the community into that particular site. And we try, we would, at least, I would hope that the state can find at least one or two additional sites, so that material doesn't have to be transported long distances to be deposited.
Has it been determined, Stu, that, you know, for people that live in those neighborhoods, if they wanted to have a summer garden, does PFOA migrate to vegetables and corn and...
Initially, initially, there was a, a number of warnings that were issued, especially about root crops, because they tend to grow in the soil.
Carrots and beets and potatoes.
Yeah. Things that grow above the ground, not so much. It doesn't, it does migrate somewhat, I'm told, but not so much. But even the concern now, that has been mitigated somewhat. I don't, I don't think that the, that the state has, has a concern for people who might garden in soils that have low levels of PFOA, because remember, we all have low levels of PFOA already in our system.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Anything else, Stu?
No, I think that's enough.
Okay. Yes, Jean?
I just want a clarification. I know this was just an FYI from the BCIC, but the Putnam Block redevelopment, they use the word "take possession." I just want to make sure that means they own it now. They own that acreage?
Yes.
Go ahead, Stu.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that that's indeed what that meant.
Carson?
I think I've held the floor long enough tonight.
No, no. Because we're all going to be sitting here echoing, "Please get out and vote yes tomorrow."
Yes.
I can't say it. And, but maybe you're going to comment on that. But, you know, it's, if, like, we get to pay later, and we get to pay a reasonable amount. If we don't, we get to pay now a fine, which we don't want to incur, which gives us nothing but another black eye. So, the essence of it...
And what's the estimated amount that we, we would be fined?
Well, the only, the only instance that the engineer pointed out to us was some years ago, the fines actually almost mirrored the, the estimated cost.
So we're talking millions of dollars?
Well, I, I'm, it could be. We hope not to face the question.
Yeah, let's, let's not be paying more fines so that we can put more pollution into our river. Yes, please vote. And please go to Oktoberfest on Saturday, October 14th.
Yes.
Guarantee your brain.
And Southern Vermont College has a fest. Also the same day, isn't it?
I don't know much about it. That's their homecoming.
But it's, but it, I think I saw something advertised that it's...
Rock and Brews or something along those lines. Rock and Brews, or something along those lines, a chamber sponsored event, being held at Southern Vermont College.
Yep.
I just wanted to say, I had a conversation with Donna Baker today from Green Mountain Express, and she said that they have the bus route signs to put up, and that they're working with the town, who's going to help put those signs every place they can. They can't put it on private property, which is really great to have bus signs up. And, and I bring it up here because there's someone who came to the meeting, and who said they come every six months, I'm thinking it was Jackie Kelly.
Maybe it was Jackie Kelly.
Was it Jackie Kelly, who asked about that. So, the signs are going up, and they're going up soon.
Fantastic. That's great.
Thank you.
I guess if there's no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank you.